I am on Thursday, June twentieth, twenty nineteen, and I call this meeting of the Bellevue Planning Commission to Order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice.
Roll call vote please.
Mr. Casey?
Here.
Mr. Perrin?
Here.
Ms. King?
Here.
Mr. Arnie? Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Ackley?
Here.
Ms. Cutsforth?
Here.
Mr. Ritz? Ms. Smith?
We have a quorum. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act, a copy of which can be found on the back wall of our council chambers. At this time, I'd ask that all commissioners and audience members please silence or turn off your cell phones or any other electric device that may disrupt our meetings and proceedings. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is approval of our May twenty-third, twenty nineteen regular meeting minutes. I'd entertain a motion to revise or approve the meeting minutes as presented.
Motion to approve is written.
Second.
Motion and second. Commissioners, please vote.
All voted yes. Motion carried.
Thank you. Our next item on our agenda, at this time, I'd like to accept into record all staff reports, attachments, minutes, memos, handouts regarding each application, staff any updates or additions since the packet was mailed last week.
Yes, we have three emails regarding Agenda Item Three B. One from Donald Consella and Mark Wilsie, one from Adam and Stacy Dinslage, Dinslage, and one from Marlene Godfroy. All of these, all three of these are in opposition to this application.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to accept into record?
I make a motion to accept into the record all staff reports, attachments, memos, and handouts regarding the applications.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Commissioners, vote.
All voted yes. Motion carried.
Great, thank you. Our next item is our consent agenda for, and we have one item on our consent agenda tonight is, and that consent item is a request to amend Section five dot two zero, City of Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding the number of full-time practitioners allowed in a medical clinic in the BN Neighborhood Business Zoning District. The applicant is the City of Bellevue. Is there anybody on the commission or in public that would like to speak in favor or against this? Seeing none, we'll leave this on the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
All voted yes. Motion carried.
Thank you. The consent agenda is approved. Our next item is public hearings. We have two on our public hearing agenda tonight. I will announce each case, then ask if there are any additional updates from the planning department. After that, the applicant will have an opportunity to present their request. After the applicant has been heard, they're publicly allowed to provide any testimony either in favor or against. I would ask that as you come forward to testify, please sign in and state your name. And testimony will be limited to five minutes, and if we have a large crowd, I reserve the right to shorten that time as necessary. I will then close the public hearing, turn it over to the commissioners to make their wishes known, which may include a resolution to, recommendation to approve or disapprove or delay. At that time, I'll restate the motion and resolve any issues with the motion itself, and we'll move forward with the vote. Our first item tonight is a Item Three A on the agenda. That is a request to rezone Lot Three, Mission Gardens replat one from BN dash PCO to BG to allow for a multi-provider medical office. The applicant is Remedy Properties LLC, location thirteen fifteen to thirteen twenty-one Galvin Road South, case number Z nineteen oh four dash zero one. Staff, any updates on this?
No, there are not, but as noted on the memo in your packet, this is being requested to be continued indefinitely. It will not be necessary to bring this back if Item Three B passes the city council. So we don't want to keep extending it month by month to the planning commission meetings. If it needs to be brought back as a result of inaction or denial of Item Three B by the council, we will re-advertise that and put it back on the next available agenda.
Okay, thank you. So we need a recommendation to delay indefinitely. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners, your wishes? Motion?
Is that a public hearing that we've got officially opened the hearing or?
Thank you. Is there anybody here wishing to come forward on Item Three A to testify either in favor or against? Seeing nobody come forward, I will close the public hearing. Commissioner, your wishes?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a request that we postpone indefinitely this application.
Second.
We have a motion and second to delay. Commissioners, please vote.
All voted yes. Motion carried.
Okay, great. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is Item Three B. That is a request to rezone Lot One. Would replat from RS seventy-two to RD sixty for the purpose of duplex residential development. The applicant is Paul Pignati. I may have mispronounced that, my apologies. The location is seventy-eight oh one South Thirtieth Street, case is Z dash nineteen oh five dash O two. Staff, any updates other than what was read into the record earlier?
Uh, nothing other than those three emails.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Would you like to step forward and make any comments? And as I mentioned, if you would, sign in and state your name for the record.
Okay, my name's Paul Pignati. I have a request to rezone Lot to RD sixty. I did some research, and there's, uh, there's actually five duplexes in that neighborhood. I have all five of them right here. I've printed off. It's wonderful, internet. You can find about anything. So here's, there's, there's all the addresses. One of them is RG fifty, another one is RG fifty, another one is RG fifty. Two of them are RS seventy-two, which is the same as what my lot is zoned at. In our neighborhood, there is my simple little map here, but there's, at the end of McCorquandale, we have a huge storage facility, Milt Mini Storage. It's, it's at the end of McCorquandale. There's automotive repair shop, three block, or three houses to the north of where this lot is located. We actually have a, uh, my purpose for doing this is I have a buyer that is interested in buying the lot. It's a family from the area. They don't actually live in the area now, but they grew up in the area. And I actually have a purchase agreement with them. They would like to purchase the lot and build a home, a duplex, but they want to build a home for the mother and her daughter and son-in-law. And they, they want to live together, but not together. And I get that because my mother-in-law lived with me for about six months, and it doesn't work. And so they, they want to come back to the area and, and live in the same residence together, but not in the same home. And that's the purpose for doing this.
Great, thank you. Any other comments you'd like to make at this time?
I'm sorry?
Any other comments you'd like to make? No? Okay. If you would have a seat, and we'll ask other members of the public to come back after we close the public hearing, we may ask you to come up for some questions commissioners may have. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to come forward to make a comment either for and against? And again, if you would, sign in and state your name.
My name's Mark Wilsie. I live right next to this lot. Been there thirty-some years. Corquandale is not, is a substandard street. Where he showed where the mother duplexes are in the bottom of the neighborhood are all standard streets. Corquandale is a dirt road. Has asphalt chips on it. It's only seventeen foot. From that telephone pole from the corner, the next telephone pole up from the corner there is seventeen foot wide. And there's no parking on either side of this lot on Thirtieth Street. And one side on third, on McCorquandale. If they put a duplex in there, what's going to happen is they're going to push more vehicles onto McCorquandale. And from that second post, there's a storm sewer that runs past my property up to the adjacent lot to the east. Middle of that lot, past my place. That drains the whole side of that street because we've had three inches of rock and everything else before we asphalt chipped that street. You can ask Bobby Riggs about that because I worked for the city about you when this went on. Across the street from me, what caused the problem was they chopped off the tube. They, they closed the tube off, and we had a nightmare. The old farmhouse that sat there was full of water because it was not on the sewer. So we went in. We purchased the tube. Bellevue did not. Bellevue put it in. And now we're just, we're adding problems to McCorquandale. And the residents all on McCorquandale. Because the strip, Thirtieth Street's a hill. In the wintertime, people have problems going up and down that hill, and they fly up and down that hill. We do not need a duplex in a single-family neighborhood. I built thirty-some years ago, and I figured it'd be fam, single-family dwellings because I had one next door to me. That's all I'm saying.
Great, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward and make a statement either in favor or against?
My name is Don Sendalar. I was built in Southern View Edition. I was the first family that moved in there. I was the first, second, third house built in there. And when we bought this house, we were told that these were supposed to be single-family dwellings. And that's why most of us bought there. I bought there fifty-nine years ago. And at that time, believe me, the money was scarce, and we, we forced ourselves to do what we wanted to do and to get a house that we wanted. The duplex might sound good right now, but you know, Section Eight from the government is standing right behind us, and you know what that does to the property? And what that does to the family dwellings around, around them places. And as far as the man says, I, I can't pronounce his name, but at the end of McCorquandale, there is a big storage lot, but it's no, no entrance from our part. It's, that's from Chandler Road. The only entrance into that storage lot is from Chandler Road. Now, this man has built the bigger storage lot, but it's on the Cedar Island Road, and I suppose he'll have an entrance from Cedar Island. We don't know yet. But this family dwelling is, you know, you got a lot and a half, so you're going to build two houses on three-quarters of a lot? We couldn't do that. So I would just like to say that I am very much opposed to this, and I think it should be read over by the, you guys very carefully. Thank you.
Before you step away from the microphone, could you give us your address, please, for the record?
Pardon me?
Could you read into the microphone your address, please?
Twenty-nine oh eight Betty. I am number three on your lot there. I'm on Betty Street. I am lot number thirty-nine.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Is there anybody else that would like to come forward to make a statement either in favor or against?
Good evening. My name is Barbara Popejoy. I live at twenty-nine oh five McCorquandale. It's kind of in the middle of the block there. I also am against the duplex. I've lived there for fifty years. It's a wonderful neighborhood, and I assumed that it was always going to be single-family residences. And I too am weary of the possibility that even though Mr. Pignati said it was going to go for by family, mother, family type thing. It, it could change, and it could not, but in the chance that it could change, Section Eight people come in because it's easy to get a Section Eight. It's not that difficult. I know from people that have gotten it. And my concern is, first of all, where in this big lot is his house going to, this duplex going to be? My concern is, I have a small car, and I go in and out of McCorquandale a lot. And the gentleman that owned that lot before, he built a garden towards the, began towards Thirtieth Street, and I could not see anything coming out that street. Even though there's a stop sign at the end of McCorquandale, I had to pull practically three-quarters of the way out into the street to see anything because of the hill that goes up towards McCorquandale. And as Mr. Wilsie said, cars fly up and down that street. There's a speed limit, yes, but nobody pays attention to it. They just fly up there, and I almost got clipped two or three times. And I don't want that to happen, and I don't want my street to be, excuse me. I do not want McCorquand to be, McCorquandale to be littered with cars that are parking because they can't park in the parking lot for the duplex. I'm, I just don't want the duplex. I don't think it fits into my neighborhood. Excuse me, but I refer to it as my neighborhood because I've been there for thirty years, over fifty years. We moved in there in December of nineteen sixty-eight. It's a nice neighborhood, and I don't feel a duplex fits. And I'm afraid that if Mr. Pignati's clients or his, the person who wants to buy his property should change his mind. And substandard people should, Section Eight peoples, I'm not saying that they're all substandard or that they are all... What do I want to say? I'm not very good at speaking, excuse me. But I just don't want, I don't want to see the neighborhood go downhill due to the property, the duplex that could possibly get in and the people that live in it. That's all I have to say, and I'll finish right in my name.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to come forward to speak either in favor or against the zoning request? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And we may have the applicant come forward if the board commissioner has any questions, so. Be patient. Would you like to respond to one or two of those comments? Please.
First of all, my dad owned forty to fifty homes, units, that were primarily Section Eight. And those were some of the finest people that I ever met. And, and for somebody to come up here and say because somebody can't afford rent, that they don't belong in my neighborhood? That, I, I don't get that. I, that's, that to me is, should, I, I don't, I don't get that. The other thing is, we've been trying to sell this lot for over a year. We've had several people interested in purchasing our lot to put a home there. The neighborhood can thank Mark Wilsie for it not selling because we had several people interested in our lot. And Mark would come out when, when anybody was interested, and they, he would berate them. He would intimidate them. He would tell them that the lot could not be built on. He told them that the city half-assed the demo on the house that was there. I have an affidavit. We actually have a potential lawsuit against Mr. Wilsie for harassing these buyers.
So if-
I have all the information right here.
Sir, if I may, I, I don't want to get into a, um, argument on personalities or what's happened in the past. Right now before us is just a zoning request. Did, did you have any items-
I just want to address the various issues.
-that the public had mentioned with the zoning, zoning request? Specifically, you, you, you've made some comments in response, so with the zoning request itself, sir, do you have anything?
No, I just wanted, but I also have eight signatures of people who are, don't, don't mind if there's a, a duplex right up there. I was hesitant to present this earlier because I know Mr. Wilsie will intimidate and harass them. I just would like these names to be protected if we can. I did send a letter to, email to Chris with your department. I don't want to mess up his last name. But if we can keep these private, I would like that. If they have to be made public, that's fine. I just don't want these people harassed or intimidated like our potential buyers were. So can I present this?
Anything you turn in does become part of the public record?
I understand that, but I just want to know, I don't want these people harassed.
So, so given that, if you'd like to submit it to the staff for us to take a look at, Ms. Palm, she can get that to us to look at and get it, but it will be part of the public record.
I guess that's all I wanted to add.
Harassment, I'd refer to other departments of the, of the city to, to, for people to be responsive to, and they, and they should be very free and open to contact those groups if they do feel-
And the other thing is, you know, I'd like to express some of the concerns that you guys have, I've read your code. You have very explicit rules and regulations that have to be followed regardless of what's built there. And, and, and wherever the, the building sits, there are setbacks that have to be followed. And, and they're, you know, it's not going to be the, it won't obstruct Thirtieth Street. They have to follow the setbacks. So it's not like they're going to be able to build a house or a home right on Thirtieth Street. They'll be able to see both directions, so.
Okay, thank you. Before you sit down, I'm going to close the public hearing, but the commissioners may have a question for you, so I will. One more rebuttal. Have, you have already spoken, have you not, sir?
Yes, but he just trashed me.
Well, here again, unless it's, unless it's specifically regarding the zoning application itself and any issues regarding the zoning, that's what we're interested in tonight.
So what he said was a lie?
That's-
Just so you know, what he said was a lie.
Ma'am, ma'am, the microphone probably won't pick up, the microphone probably won't pick up any of that, and that's, that's, that's really a zoning issue. We want to talk just specifically tonight on the zoning issue. The, the personalities and neighborhood differences are something that we just can't resolve here tonight. And I appreciate the emotions and the frustrations it causes on both sides. I've, I've been there with, with neighborhood conflicts myself, and we all have. But, but tonight, we're just specifically looking at the zoning. And so with that, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to the commissioners. Commissioners, your wishes? Thoughts, comments? I have one for you while the other commissioners may be composing their thoughts. You are not going to be the builder of this, you're just the seller, is that correct?
The lady that wants to purchase the lot really wants it, but she didn't want to go through the rezoning process, and silly me, I said, well, it can't be that bad. Let me try. You know, I'll do it. I'll, you know, go before the board and, and present our case and, and see if I can get it done for us. Yeah.
I, I just wanted to mention, if you were going to be the builder, that, that in, in looking over the area, I made note that it seems like there's a fairly substantial power line that runs along Thirtieth Street. And typically, they can have fairly wide easement requirements. And so in the construction process, I was just going to throw out a suggestion that you'd do a thorough search on easements along the Thirtieth Street with that power line.
Is it going to be more than, I need to let the buyer, my agents back here, but is it going to be more than the thirty-five feet?
Uh, you'd have to do a, a search for the, for the easement and talk to the power company to, to be sure what, what they're seeing there. But my, my observation is it's there, and typically, if they're up in the air quite a ways, and that one looks pretty, pretty stout, that the easements can, can be on file on all the property along Thirtieth Street.
I will look into that. Thank you.
Commissioners?
Question for applicant. Sir, did you purchase this property after the previous house burnt down? Were you the first?
Correct, yes. I bought it after, the house was, had already burnt and was to be, was condemned by the city. And, and it actually, when I bid on it, I couldn't even buy it because it was going through the, the city to be torn down. And so I purchased it like thirty days or so before they tore it down, and I actually paid to have it tore down. I paid the bill.
And what was your intention with the property at the time you purchased it?
Oh, um, we actually wanted, wanted to build a home there. We were going to, and I actually pulled permits with the city. And, and we, we love where we're at. We have great neighbors. And so, long story short, my wife and I, we just decided, you know, do we really want to move and do we, you know, really want to pack everything up and, and move over there? And there's other reasons, but that was the primary one. We just, we decided we didn't want to move. And so we thought, well, we'll sell the lot and do something else. Yeah, but our, our intention was to build a home there. And we had pulled permits and, and had drawings made up and plot plan and had it, it was, we were ready to go. And one night, we were sitting there and walking around the house, and, and Lisa, my wife, says, do, do we really want to move? And I said, you know, you start thinking about it, it's like, nah, we, we have great neighbors. We're in a great neighborhood. We go to dinner with our neighbors all the time. I mean, it's, it's, it's a really good neighborhood where we're at, so we changed our mind.
Thank you. Thank you.
I guess the one comment I'd make, you mentioned finding other addresses of duplexes. For the ones that are in RS seventy-two, they probably were placed there or built there before the zoning ordinance came into being.
I, I don't know. I tried to research that.
Right. I'm just suggesting, we normally would not, again, with an RS seventy-two, as the staff report suggests, that's for single-family residential. And I know for one of them, for example, up on, I think it's Thirtieth and, and and Harrison, one house in from there is a duplex sitting amongst all the neighborhoods, which again, they had moved that one in from Fort Kirk Road when South Roads went in back in the sixties. And again, back then, the zoning ordinance wasn't what it is today, and it becomes a non-conforming use. We normally, as the staff report suggests, we normally don't spot zone, they call it, where we'd put a, put a-
Yeah, I don't know when they were zoned. I just know that they are zoned the same. I don't know. I tried to research that. I actually was trying to find out what they were zoned when it was built, and if the zoning had changed, and I, I, I couldn't find that information anywhere.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Your wishes?
I do have a question. It said on our report that, I believe you stated, the applicant stated, that the buyer would subdivide properties into two lots if requested, if this-
I don't know where that came from.
Okay, that's what I-
I had somebody else tell me that, and I was like, well, go look at the application. There nowhere on my application does it ask for that. And I don't know where that came from.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I divide it into two lots and sell it as two lots?
Uh, that's not a question for me.
I'd make more money.
Actually-
Then there'd be two houses there.
Yeah, you probably wouldn't meet setbacks, so.
Okay, well, again, Mr. Pignati, I appreciate the, the goal of developing a lot that's been undeveloped for a while, but based on current use around there, the RS seventy-two, I would support a motion for denial of the change of zone based on incompatibility with the existing single-family residential development surrounding it. I will second that motion. We have a motion and a second to recommend denial. Commissioners, please vote. And just to clarify, prior to your voting, a vote of yes is denial, recommendation of denial?
All voted yes, motion carried.
The motion carried, and that is a motion for a recommendation of denial to the Bellevue City Council. It will go, the recommendation of denial will go to the city council on July sixteenth, twenty nineteen.
And, and they don't always follow our advice.
They don't, or they do?
No, they don't always follow our advice, so...
And that's, you know, that's fair. I, I'm, you know, I didn't know what to expect, I always hope for the best and expect the worst, you know?
Thank you.
You bet, thank you.
Can I just ask one question? I've already spoken through it. Which way are these houses going to face if you're putting two lots on a lot and a half? And how many feet are these houses going to have? And which way are they going to face when you put them on there?
That, that might be something to ask either Mr. Pignati, if he knows it. They, they have not turned in anything as far as what they're going to build, so. That, he may, maybe you talk to Mr. Pignati if he knows.
After, after the meeting, or, and certainly, if you have no interest in their further agenda, I am sure everybody is welcome to stay or, or not, but you certainly might be able to talk to him directly about that. And ask him directly which, what his plans or thinking is, or talk to the potential buyer and see what their plans are. Again, that doesn't change our recommendation that we've made.
Okay. No, I, I heard your recommendation, but I just, all you see is a square up there, where, where are these houses going to face? Which way they going to face? It means a lot to us because we have a hell of a hill there, turn the corner on Betty Street, look at it.
Unfortunately, we, we just can't, we can't answer at that time, but I think the applicant's indicating that he'd certainly be willing to discuss that with you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, after, after you step outside, or at the end of our meeting, you're welcome to have that discussion either here or afterwards, or one-on-one, do a phone call or something like that. Great, thank you. Our next item is current business.